One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, oh, good. Hi, guys. Okay, oh, Mary Lou, good. Rick's there, Michael's there. Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six. Yes, we're all here and it's seven o'clock.
A full, a full house pending Tom's replacement.
Yes. Okay, well, um, I guess we can let Madeline know that we're ready.
Yes, Chair, we're live.
Hi, wonderful. Okay, thank you so much. Welcome. Um, good evening and welcome to the San Bruno Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Uh, Happy New Year, and thank you to everyone for attending another virtual meeting. And thank you again to our San Bruno City staff for making this possible. Um, for our members of the public, we want to hear from you. And if you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment or during a public hearing item uh, that's on the agenda, you can use the raise your hand button uh, in your Zoom tools. And when it's your turn to speak, we'll call your name and unmute you, and you'll have three minutes to address the commission. And if you're joining by telephone, uh, you can also address the public, um, uh, address the commission during public comment by pressing star nine, and uh, we will address and unmute you. And again, you'll have three minutes. Um, let's see. A quick reminder, we're going to continue to do uh, roll call votes for every agenda item and then we'll vote. Um, I guess just a generic vote to close uh, public hearings. Um, I think that is mostly it. I guess we're ready for a roll call, Pamela.
Wonderful. Madeline, do you mind uh, taking roll call for the commissioners?
Sure. Chair Lefin?
Here.
Vice Chair Biassodi? Commissioner Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Madden?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, and we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. And um, Madeline, are you able to give us the flag?
I am.
Thank you. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, we can now move on to our business items. And that begins with the approval of minutes from October 20th, 2020. That was our last meeting, amazingly. Um, yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Uh, through the chair, a couple of minor things on the minutes for last, last meeting. Uh, really the approval of the minutes, um, it said states that there were six As and in fact, there were seven. And also on item 4B Cypress Avenue, uh, the motion to close public hearing, uh, it said approved 6-0, but I believe, and it didn't show any abs- absent- abstention. But I believe that you, Commissioner Lefin, abstained.
Uh, yeah, item 4B and 4A, I did abstain from both. It was noted in 4A, but actually I wanted to point out that uh, my abstention was not noted in 4B.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, good.
We'll amend the minutes. Thank you for clarification.
Sure, thank you Pamela. So with, with the amend, with the amendments, does anybody have any other amendments or comments? Okay, so with those amendments, would anybody like to motion that we um, approve the minutes?
Yeah, I move we approve the minutes of uh, August 20th.
Great. Second?
Second.
Second, Mary Lou? And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Sounds as though we are approved. Um, okay, and then now we have our first public comment. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak about topics that are not on the tonight's agenda. And um, Madeline, if there are any members of the public, uh, they can raise their hands to speak. Do we see anybody who would like to speak?
We do.
Okay, so we have three minutes for individuals and five minutes for groups. Although I don't know how we do groups on here, so I guess we're gonna do probably individuals. Um, and uh, just per the Brown Act, we can't vote on anything that is um, non-agendized, but we do take comments and we welcome them.
Okay, Tom Hamilton, I'm gonna bring you into the room. Can you hear us, Tom?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I will not use my three minutes. Um, I'll, I'll keep it quick, so I know you guys want to get to work. Um, with all the, the cancellations of meetings at the end of 2020, I never got a chance to say goodbye and thank you. So I wanted to join very quickly to um, to uh, thank all of you for um, for uh, all of your work here on the committee. I learned so much from each and every one of you, uh, both commissioners and staff. Um, it was a great experience being on the, on the planning commission. And I know you guys will continue to do great work um, uh, for the city of San Bruno, and I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I know, I know, I, I probably speak for everybody when I say it was such a pleasure to work with you and we learned from you as well, and uh, I know I look forward to working with you in your new capacity and congratulations on your city council uh, position.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Congratulations, Tom, and best of luck with your new position.
Tom, I also, this is Mary Lou, I also wish you the very best. You're good, um, you do good home, you do your homework well. You're thorough, you think things through, and I look forward to seeing your decisions on the, on the city council. Good, good job and good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. That's it, then I'll just say thanks, Tom, and we'll see you soon. Okay, anybody else, uh, Madeline, for public comment?
No, no one else.
Okay, thank you. Um, so then we'll go to item three, announcement of conflict of interest. Do any commissioners need to recuse themselves from any items tonight?
Uh, yeah, I do for the uh, Cottonwood project.
Okay. Okay, that's our first item and it's gonna be next. Um, Pamela or maybe Madeline, can you remind me how we uh, I think you put him in a waiting room, is that right?
We put him in a waiting room. Uh, I'll do that now.
Okay, we'll see you on the other side, Commissioner Madden. Well, in that case...
Could I actually ask as a point of order, does that allow the commissioner to observe the proceedings or are they held out entirely?
The um, commissioner is um, allowed to observe the proceeding. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll go to um, item four, that's new business. And item 4A is 2601 Cottonwood Drive. And staff report, please.
Hey, thank you. Um, Michael Smith, Planning Department Staff. Um, so the item before you is 2601 Cottonwood Drive. This is a request for a conditional use permit to construct a 1386 square foot residential addition that would enlarge the existing house by more than 50% of the existing floor area, exceed the maximum permitted floor area by 350 square feet, and exceed the maximum permitted lot coverage by 386 square feet. If approved, the house would be uh, 3,534 gross square feet, and that includes the attached two-car garage. Uh, the existing single-family residence is also being used as a residential care facility for up to six occupants, and I'll go into that further later on in the uh, presentation. Um, the subject property is located on Cottonwood Drive in the Rollingwood Number Two neighborhood or subdivision uh, between Rollingwood Drive and Greenwood Way. The existing home was constructed in 1955 and has five bedrooms and three bathrooms, a living room and a dining room, and approximately 1,648 square feet of habitable floor area with a 413 square foot two-car garage. Uh, the subject lot measures 6,160 square feet. That's 56 feet in width by 140 feet in depth. Um, in 1996, a 600 square foot addition was added to the rear of the home. Uh, the addition added two bedrooms, a full bathroom, and enlarged the dining room. And at approximately the same time, the building was authorized as a residential care facility for up to six adults. And the entrance ramp was added, uh, going up to the front door that you see in the photos. Um, the applicant is proposing to construct a 358 square foot first-floor addition at the rear of the building and a new 595 square foot second-floor addition. Uh, the ground floor addition would measure about 12 feet in depth. Um, and the, the addition would add a new family room and a new uh, a couple bedrooms on the second floor. Oh, excuse me, sorry. Uh, so that, let me, let me back up a second. So they're adding, they're adding a 1,386 square foot addition to the rear of the home. Uh, the addition would measure 18 feet in depth and 38 and a half feet in width and 22 feet in height. Uh, the addition would be set back nine feet, six inches from the right side property line and eight feet from the left side property line. And 14 feet, one inch from the rear property line. Uh, the addition would add three bedrooms, an office and a living room, and two and one-half baths to the existing uh, residence. If approved and constructed, the existing structure would remain a single-family dwelling being used as a residential care facility with eight bedrooms, five and one-half bathrooms, and 3,120 square feet of habitable area. Uh, this project does qualify for a Class 1 exemption per section, the 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, so the Architectural Review Committee reviewed this project at its November um, meeting, uh, of 2020. Um, the discussion at that meeting really centered around the future use of the property as a single-family dwelling, um, and what that would mean with eight bedrooms and five and a half bathrooms, and whether it was appropriate for the neighborhood. Uh, other concerns discussed at that meeting inclu- um, came from the uphill neighbor who had submitted correspondence to uh, staff um, that the proposed addition would block their view, their easterly view towards uh, the East Bay Hills and towards the Bay. But after receiving all of this uh, public input, um, and listening to the uh, staff's recommendation, the ARC ultimately did um, recommend forwarding this use permit uh, by a 3-nothing vote to the Planning Commission for approval. Um, and there was a number of uh, recommendations they wanted to see implemented in those plans. Uh, so I'm gonna go through those briefly. Um, they wanted the label, uh, the windows labeled to ensure that all windows within the building are the same material, color, and operation. They wanted a belly band added to the rear and side elevations of the addition since it was two stories in height. They wanted the, uh, the roofing material labeled so that it would match the existing roofing material. Um, they wanted to make sure that the uh, front yard got re-landscaped as part of the project. Uh, they wanted the front windows on the addition that face the street, they wanted those to be made larger. Uh, they wanted to remove the existing second-floor bedroom window on the west elevation and remove the shutters um, from all of the windows and uh, originally the project had, had shutters on all the windows in the additions and those. And so all of these um, recommendations from the ARC have been uh, implemented in the project that is before you right now. Meeting notices for this meeting were mailed out to neighbors, or, or excuse me, property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, and staff received correspondence from two neighbors who are opposed to the project. Uh, those letters were received over the past weekend and forwarded to the commissioners, you, you guys this morning. Uh, so hopefully you have that. So the existing home has uh, five bedrooms and three bathrooms and is currently being used as a residential care facility for up to uh, six elderly uh, residents, and this was authorized used as of 1996. Um, a residential care facility with a maximum occupancy of um, of six people is principally permitted in a residential district. Uh, no use permit is required. Um, and this, what they're, the proposed addition would not um, uh, expand that use, and so that's, that's really important to re- to remember that. Um, so the facility is licensed for six individuals, and this use permit, no matter how large the building is or how many bedrooms it may have, um, can only be licensed for, for six individuals. Um, now, it is an odd situation, so uh, staff and con- and speaking with the applicant, um, they have their residential care facility uh, business that they run out of the existing building, and she is planning on moving family members, uh, including her mom into the, into the addition portion of it. So, uh, how it would function is the, the two would, would co-mingle and they would use the same, same kitchen. And um, staff wasn't aware of that kind of situation, so I, we did have conversations with the licensing, um, the state licensing agency uh, for the facility, and this does not go against licensing requirements. Um, so, and, and also it doesn't go against licensing requirements to do an addition to, to the building in general. And in gen- um, and so this facility will always remain a six-residence facility at the max, and in this uh, residential district, you cannot have more even with a use permit. So, that should uh, go a long way in addressing, uh, if you've read the letter from the um, the neighbors, um, it should go a long way in addressing their concerns with uh, whether or not the city would ex- that facility would expand as a result of this addition. So the use permit that they're requesting, um, as I said, is not related to the residential care facility, but it's for uh, normal use permit requirements for expansion of a single-family dwelling. Uh, once again, it's for a 50% expansion and also um, to exceed the maximum permitted floor area by 350 square feet and pre- and exceed the maximum permitted lot coverage by 386 square feet. So the project um, would extend uh, about 18 feet deep is what I've stated earlier. Um, and that's similar in depth to the two adjacent buildings. So the building to the, on the downhill side, which is to the left, if you're looking at the pictures, um, is a one-story building, but it does have an addition that extends out the back, uh, approximately the same depth as the proposed addition. Uh, the uphill building, which was the building on the right and to the west, I believe, um, that building uh, has a similar two-story addition at the rear, similar to what's being proposed here. So, by setting the addition back towards the rear of the building, um, you're kind of maintaining the ranch-style architectural design character uh, of the original structure as, as viewed from the street. And overall, um, so as I said, the building exceeds the maximum permitted floor area and it would be a .61 FAR or floor area ratio. Um, so in the staff report, I've uh, included, and just so you know, the, the maximum permitted by the code is .55. And so they're, again, they're proposing .61. Um, and I've included a chart in the uh, staff report which looks at other uh, projects which were approved by the Planning Commission to exceed um, the FAR, and most of them are in this range of the .6, and so uh, for that reason, uh, we find this project to be um, consistent and compatible with the neighborhood at, at .61. So the proposed addition would be finished in stucco to match the existing building finish, and is, which is also the predominant exterior material that can be found in the surrounding neighborhood. Um, the proposed windows will be white vinyl sliders throughout the building, they will, so that they'll all match. Uh, the belly band has been added. Um, so, so really, we feel like this building, uh, this proposal does comply with the residential design guidelines. Um, and it, and lastly, it also meets the resident, uh, the di- daylight plane requirements of the residential design guidelines. Um, so, uh, again, we feel like this is compatible with the neighborhood. It preserves the existing buildings' um, uh, ranch-style character. Um, it is similar in size to the adjacent buildings as far as its form in depth. And for that reason, we're uh, recommending that the Planning Commission approve the use permit uh, based on the findings in the staff report, one through six, and conditions of approval, one through 31, in the staff report. And, and this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments you might have.
Okay, um, let's see. I, I just wanted to let Madeline know that my video uh, has been turned off by them, by the host, which is fine with me because I don't love looking at my own face, but I just wanted to let you know that's why I'm not smiling back at you.
Okay, great, we'll correct that, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, at this point, do any of the uh, commissioners have clarifying questions for staff? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, um, there, uh, um, at the, um, on drawing number A4, there's an existing bedroom on the first floor, in northwest corner, and there's no window shown. I thought it ca- that came up at the ARC meeting that a window needs to be added to that room, uh, you know, by code, it has to have a window. And I think it meant relocating the, the closet that was in the room. So that was one point. And I do, I'm not sure if the windows on the front elevation, the, on the second floor, have been enlarged. They still look very small to me. But uh, I don't have the, the previous drawings to compare with. And last but not least, I thi- thought at the ARC that we requested the removal of all sh- window shutters. The comment was that it made it look too fussy, and...
Yeah, that is, that is correct. Um, let me see, so, let me see, I, I need to make sure that you have the right plans. Um, I may have not. Do, do you see the belly band on those plans, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, it showed the belly band.
Yeah.
It didn't, it didn't, I don't think it mentioned it, but it, there was a, a line there showing a belly band.
Okay, um, and your plans still have shutters on them?
Yes. And, and no window in that, was one bedroom.
Yeah, I'm seeing, I'm definitely seeing at least one set of shutters on the proposed west elevation and another pair on the proposed east on the version I'm looking at.
Okay, I, I, um, I, I apologize. I think you might have the wrong plans. Do you mind if I share them with you?
Sure.
Okay. Just bringing them up right here. All right, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, I, and I apologize. This is the, these are the correct set of plans. Um, so you can see the windows were made larger.
Yeah, they do look better, yes.
Yeah, uh, the windows on the front elevation were made larger. Um, and then, let me see here. Going to the rear elevation, the uh, all the, all the shutters have been removed.
Good.
And then I'll go to the uh, side elevations as well. You can see on the side elevation that the, that those shutters have been removed as well, and you can see the bell- belly band there as well.
Yes.
Um, and then there's the other elevation down below. That's where the window was removed, um, that was looking at the neighbor's house. And so that, so that was done, and then uh, going to the
The layout drawing A4.
Yeah, so that, that's what we're looking at right here. So there's the win- this, um, what they did is they put a sliding glass door uh, in that bedroom, uh, where they're, where we asked them to put a window.
I see it, yeah, on the corner, yeah, and the clo- the closet has been moved.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
So I, so I, I, I apologize again. Um, I, I attached the wrong set of plans to the, to the uh, staff report, so.
It's easily, it's easily done. Thank you.
But uh, but thank you for asking, and I was, uh, glad we got that clarified.
No, that looks fine.
Okay, um, are there any other commissioners that have clarifying questions for staff?
Uh, Commissioner Biassodi, I have a commi- a question for staff. If I may. Um, Michael, looking at this property now that I've had some time to think about it, moving ahead and thinking about the possibility of years in the future, this building being used, sold and used as a residence again, how would that rear addition look as if they were, we were to call it an ADU? Separate it off and, and would that work?
That would totally work. And, and it's, it's interesting that you mention it because it is something that staff did discuss with the property owner. Um, and it wasn't something that she was interested in pursuing, but definitely in the future, uh, another owner could easily convert this to an ADU legally.
Okay, so we're not creating something that, that would be unusable, let's say, in the future for for the zoning purposes of this property. Okay, and then the second, the second comment of, of, actually, I'll save that for later in the conversation. Thank you. I'm done.
I guess I have a, a follow-up on that question, if I may.
Yes.
In, in order for this to be an ADU, it looks at the main thing you'd be doing is simply sealing up. Uh, it's that seven-foot-five joint that's in the, the picture here, but that would leave the back unit with no um, kitchenette, wouldn't it? It would have bathroom service but no kitchen, so in order to be a proper ADU, you would need to, you know, either convert a bedroom into a kitchen or something like that. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct, that's very correct.
Um, if I can jump in with Commissioner Harmon on the ADU question, um, is it, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, an ADU can be up to 50% of the size of the original home, if I'm not mistaken, and this would exceed that? Or am I, am I drawing from the wrong source?
Um, hmm, the, the ADU's rules are a little complicated, but I believe that if it's um, two bedrooms or more, it, it, we have to allow up to 1,000 square feet. Um, and because we're, we don't have a compliant ADU ordinance right now, so we're still under state law. And state law actually allows all the way up to 1,200, I believe, square feet.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was more of a curiosity than anything, but I, I, I did ask myself why they weren't pursuing this as an ADU.
Yeah, but, but uh, um, like I said, staff did have those discussions with the applicant and property owner. Um, and so, um, feel free to ask them if you want further clarification on why they didn't pursue that as opposed to this addition.
Okay, and then another question is, uh, I, I've never seen a project, a residential project come before us that has eight bedrooms, and obviously I haven't been here as long as some of the other commissioners, but, I mean, it, it really uh, is significant in my mind. Um, and eight, five and a half is uh, something unusual. And I was just wondering if there's, and I, I presume you would tell me if there were anything in our uh, general plan or in our code that um, has any guidance or uh, restrictions on numbers of bedrooms?
Uh, there isn't, there isn't anything in our code that specifically limits bedrooms. Uh, the way our code works is mostly to limit overall size of buildings, um, but not necessarily interior layout.
Okay. Um...
Through the chair?
Yes, please.
So I had one other observation I wanted to make at this juncture. The letters that we got from the neighbors were concerned that they possibly might be expanding the business. But my mom was in a home like this, and understanding the way they operate, you have a non-ambulatory patience, so the new bedrooms that are being added are not on the same floor, so they really wouldn't be able to expand, except for the one in the back. But um, you really wouldn't be able to use this as uh, increasing the size of the business. Um, just because of the nature of the use of the business and, and the way this is set up, so I just wanted to make sure that we commented on that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a good observation. Um, any more clarifying questions for staff? Okay, all right. Okay, all right, um, in that case, um, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and, uh, I'd like to invite the applicant to, um, present the project. Tell us a little about, um, themselves and, and what their plans are. Are they with us tonight?
Uh, yes, I believe they are.
Uh, I believe that's Kevin O'Connor.
Uh, yes, and Evelyn Ryan.
Great, I will bring them into the room.
Hello? Oh, hi, um, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I apologize, I was late. I was so overwhelmed with getting COVID vaccination, and I really, really forgot about the meeting after reminding Mr. O'Connor this morning. But anyway, I only heard some of the comments, um, regarding the number of the rooms and whether the business would be increased. But as I have mentioned to Mr., um, Michael Smith, the reason why I, I am adding a home, uh, an extension is mainly for my mother, who is eighty-five years old and is currently residing in San Mateo. And, um, the hu- she has a room there, it's only one room and one, and one bath, and it's not, because she uses a wheelchair and, and a walker, it's not an A D A, you know, it doesn't meet her needs. And the reason why it's, you know, Mr. Smith had asked the question, why, why does my mom need a three-bedroom? My, my sister is the primary caretaker for her, and then the other room would be basically for her reliever, and I, and it would also be used as an office for, for the homes, because we have a total of five homes. And all the homes, you know, this is the only home that we will add on wherein I would be able to have an office, other than my dining table, which is not a dining table, but an office table. So that's the reason why. And, and the number of, um, the question about the eight bedrooms and five and a half, um, baths, the original, the care home has three bedrooms that are, that are for the clients. Um, each room has, um, has two clients, and then the two staff room, the two staff room are actually very small, and then they occupy two, you know, the one room is for, um, the, the female staff, and then the other one, that was supposedly my office, became a male staff. And so, that's the reason why it looks, you know, there's a lot of rooms, but actually, it's, you know, it's just, it's just the number of rooms that would meet the needs of the people. And then, um, the, the question about increasing the number of the clients, uh, we, we're not, it's only licensed for six, and we cannot increase it to, to any, I cannot increase the number of the clients in an R one. And then the room at the back is mainly designed for my mom.
Okay, thank you. Um, does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Yes, please.
I do. Um, Ms. Ryan, I just want to, uh, ask a couple of questions. Uh, there was, uh, there was a question that wa- that rose, uh, earlier about the A D U. And have you considered applying, applying for this as an A D U? And if, and if so, and if not, what was your thinking behind it?
Uh, you know what, it crossed my mind in the beginning, but it was the, in the beginning, it was very small. And then, and then the fact that my mom is disabled and then it's going to be at the back, I feel, you know, when it's raining and stuff, it will be easier to have an access for the, because we have a ramp in the front, and then it will be easier for her just to go through all the way to the back. And then the staff that we have there, some of them have been there, a couple of them have been there for twenty-four years, and they're good friends with my mom, because my mom used to work in that care home. She was the cook.
I think that the, the, the question, the thought that raises, thought for me is, if I was a neighbor and there were eight bedrooms and would be fu- future use. I have been in many board and care homes, many. And, um, have family members also been in them, but more importantly, I've, I've been in many as a commissioner. And the one thing is if I had to have a board and care home next to me, I'd rather have that than an apartment building. And, uh, it really is a pretty low-key. I visit many people in them, uh, there is activity, but the activity is, is low-key. It's not high-energy. Whereas you have a, uh, apartment building of eight, i- it's much more, much more energy. But as a neighbor, that doesn't understand or doesn't have that experience of knowing that, it, it could be, my goodness, if she decides to, um, close her business and turn this into, into rooming, a rooming house, or a, uh, just rent out rooms, or family members renting out rooms, and there's nothing about renting out rooms to family members as well. And then you're looking at all the cars, you're looking at all the congestion, looking at all that goes with that, and that does impact the neighbor, a neighborhood. And so, I just want...
Wouldn't that be illegal, though?
Pardon me?
I mean, the, if a, a boarding house is a separate business, it would be illegal.
Yes, and, and, um, I just want to let you know, I've had, my, my other home is in Redwood City, and that was in nineteen eighty-six. I have no plan to, um, sell my business or close the business. It is, it is basically a vocation that I, other, I used to be a critical care nurse, and when I quit working at Peninsula Hospital as a critical care nurse, I worked full-time with taking care of the developmental disabled, and I have no plans of selling it. And it's actually in my living trust that even my children cannot sell the homes, that it would function as a care home for the, for the developmental disabled, because they really need home. They need a good place, they need a good home to take care of them.
Yeah, well, you know, Ms. Ryan, I admire you for that, and, and I've been in the business myself, that really it's a, it's a passion and it's a vocation. And you're correct, uh, Commissioner Harmon, on, um, on the board and care, I used the wrong terminology on that. Uh, so it basically would be, if you wanted to rent out rooms, just because, you know, you can rent out a room in your own home. And I think that's the concern that I see neighbors, neighbors, um, you know, having. And, and even though, Ms. Ryan, you have no intention, people retire, things change, things happen. I, at one point, never thought I would ever sell my business, and here I am, sold my business. And so, things, things change, and so I think that it's just having that discussion.
I, I can...
So that neighbors have at least know that it was raised, questions, it wasn't just, they sent a letter in, but the questions were raised to, to you about that.
Yes, I could understand their concern, but if you think about, um, that home that has been there since nineteen ninety-six, there's only one car that's parked there. There's only one staff, one male staff that drives. I know, there's only one car, and my car, when I make my rounds.
Yeah.
Just like, you know. Sorry.
And, and in bo- and in, um, board and care residential homes, they're very minimal in, uh, in, in, in parking. I mean, it's, it's really the best use of space without having a lot of impact to the community. It was really looking that, should you, at one point, sell them? And, and, uh...
I promise I won't.
Well, you know, I, I...
Oh, even my kids are not allowed, even my kids are not allowed to sell them. I'll be coming back to earth if I, I'll hunt them. If I go to heaven and they sell them, it's against, it's really not, I don't know. It's, it's just my principle that it, it will be, I have a legal document. It's, 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 it's a living trust. And then the, it says there that none of them can sell the properties, and then, and then, you know, it, it will remain as a, as a care home.
Well, I respect you that you, you're that committed to your, to your vocation, I truly do.
I know, the lawyer did not like that either.
It isn't anything that I could comment to, or it really doesn't fall into the realm of our decision-making. Um, it's mostly looking at the concerns of the neighbors and asking, asking the right questions so that we, that we could make a good decision.
Thank you.
Based upon that, that's really the intent of the question, yeah. To be able to say, you know, I looked at every question, and, uh, I can feel good about my outcome decision. And, and just recognizing that an eight-bedroom home, five and a half baths, is hu- is, it's, it's huge, it's dense, and, um, and as a residential, uh, care facility, it works really well. Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Ryan.
Thank you so much for, for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you, do any other commissioners have a question for, uh, Ms. Ryan? Okay, um, now we can go ahead and invite any, uh, comments from the public. Um, Melissa, do we have anybody who would like to speak on this item?
Uh, no, we don't.
Oh, okay. Um...
Madeline, uh, through the chairs.
Yes, please.
Uh, Madeline, uh, I was expecting maybe one of the neighbors to show up, and I see a number of phone numbers out there. Um, could we just simply ask that the, if you're in the, um, public and you want to speak on this item, just, uh, raise your hand?
You might need to remind people on phones how to raise their hands.
Oh, star nine, star nine if you're on the phone.
Oh, we have a hand raised.
Yeah.
So, number seven, one, three, I'll bring you into the room. You have three minutes.
Okay, hi, and welcome to the meeting, it looks, hi, and welcome to the meeting, it looks like you're live.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I am the next-door neighbor to the east of twenty-six, zero, one. My name is Art Poon, and I reside at twenty-five, ninety-one Cottonwood Drive. Um, I did leave a letter with Michael Smith a couple of days ago, uh, sharing my objection to the plan, uh, in place. And, uh, I think you have a copy of that letter before you?
Yes, we do.
Okay, uh, I heard so much all about this and all of the legal terminology about the, uh, the, if you will, the visual of what the building is to look like, uh, windows, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, but more important to me, being next door to twenty-six, oh, one, is that their property sits two and a half to three feet higher than mine, which means then that in order to put up a common fence, which I put up a second one, this second one was paid for equally by twenty-six, oh, one and myself. Uh, my side of the fence reaches up to about nine and a half feet tall to get a little bit of privacy from, uh, from any eyes, uh, uh, though I don't expect people to be peering at me, but it was that comfort zone of being private. Uh, the fact that in the back, and with this two-story building being, uh, thought about, I'm just concerned to be like a, a fish in a fishbowl. And, uh, there would be absolutely no privacy whatsoever. And as a result of that, uh, I would not be using that area as much as I would like to, which I have. Um, uh, hard to, um, get straight all that has been talked about in the last twenty, twenty-five minutes, but I'll just address, uh, further that, uh, uh... And it was pointed out by one of you, uh, the, the lady, about the, the excesses of the eight rooms, nine rooms, which is not conducive to the normalcy of what the neighborhood is like. And so, that in itself is a, uh, a bright light as well. And also, the point made was, who's to say that, uh, even though it's not going to be, uh, added to what would be now a six-room care facility because of all of the reasons of walls that are now still in place, who's to say that the walls don't change? And as well, what was mentioned too was the fact that, uh, uh, it could be, rooms could be rented out and so forth and so on, so you're gonna have a lot of disturbance with terms, in terms of cars and so forth.
Excuse me, sir, your three minutes is up.
Okay, well, uh, can I have one, uh, another thirty seconds?
I, I think we can accommodate it, yeah?
Sure, yes.
Oh, thir- thirty more, and then we'll, we'll bring it back.
Okay, Cottonwood Drive, as it intersects with Carmel Court, is a very, very busy corridor. Cars parked on both sides of the streets, on both of these streets. We now have a pandemic going on, which of course reduces traffic to some degree. But when that's over with, it's going to be Katy Bar the Door again, because people come down that street to get to two-eighty on the freeway, et cetera, to get to Snake Lane and, and so forth, so those who live in the area. And so, it would be most, most, uh, uh, noisy and, and risky. And of course, I don't know what's going to happen with Rollingwood Elementary School, too, if that opens, continues to be a school. Uh, who's to say, uh, all of the possibilities? So I'll leave, uh, I, I thank you for allowing me to address it a little bit further.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Poon, I appreciate your, your comments.
Thank you very much, thanks for listening.
Sure. Um, Madeline, do we have anybody else, um, with their hand raised who would like to speak?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Eddie, I'm gonna bring you in the room. Can you hear us, Eddie?
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes.
Good.
Hi, Eddie, we have, uh, three minutes, uh, and we, uh, invite you to share your thoughts with us.
Yeah, I, I hear that, like, the number of bedroom is actually locked in the rule, but I also heard that that particular building plan exceeded certain exist- uh, existing rule, the parameter. I do not know the detail, but this is, like, I think it's at least two, like, the total number of area of the wayso is higher than the permitted, um, um, i- i- is, is higher than the permitted, uh, allowed, that, uh, footage or the wayso. Uh, so I just want to know, like, um, like, should, should the applicant abide to the rule to minimize those, uh, uh, footage, um, like, why? There's a exception that they can have more than those allowed. I think this is, uh, what I want to know.
Okay, um, well, if you could go ahead and I, if you have any other, uh, any other, uh, questions or comments, go ahead and leave them now, and then we're gonna bring your comments back to commission discussion. Um, and then hopefully we should get a little bit of clarification on that.
Okay. So...
Mr. Lo, did, did you have any, any further comments, um, before?
Yeah, I think, I think in general, like, there's concern on the traffic, there's concern on the usage, there's concern on the future usage, maybe, like, the seller will sell it, or maybe there's other uncertainty, uh, but like, I think at least, I would like the applicant to be abide to the rule, uh, that it will be, like, there's privacy concern, there's, uh, also other concerns, so, um, yeah, so that's, this is my comment, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lo, I appreciate your, your coming and sharing your concerns tonight. Um, Madeline, do we have anybody else who would like to share?
No.
Okay, okay, um, in that case, um, let's go ahead and, um...
Chair, a hand just raised.
Oh, okay, all right, they just scooted right in there. Uh, yeah, let's bring them in and, um, invite them for three minutes.
Number six, one, eight, I'm gonna bring you into the room. Hello, can you he- hear us? Hello, six, one, eight?
Hi there.
Hi, welcome. You are on, we invite you, we, we would love to hear your comments, and we have, uh, thr- about three minutes on the clock coming up right now, yeah? And we would love to hear your feedback.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity. I am a neighbor, I live about two houses downhill from, from, from the address we are... I am a neighbor, I live about two houses downhill from, from, from the address we are talking about, twenty-six, oh, one. So I am actually a little lower than, than the, than the, uh, the house. And my concern is the size of, you know, the size of the height of this addition. Um, again, as one of the other neighbors had mentioned, was this issue of privacy. Um, this is, you know, two-story, and they're actually higher than me already. So again, it's the issue of lack of privacy in my yard, and, um, you know, and also just, just the size, just listening to all this. Unfortunately, I don't have the video, so I couldn't see of the plans or what's actually being proposed, but it's just sounds so massive. Um, an average house, it's unaltered in this neighborhood, it's normally a three-bedroom, two-back, and this is more than doubling the size, so again, that's my concern. Like, I understand what the current use is. Again, my, my concern would be in the future, you know, if anything may change at some point. And it's just that, you know, with, with more rooms, with more people, it's just, just the size of it is just so out of context with the rest of, of the neighborhood. So that, that was just my concern.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Teresa, my name is Teresa Toy.
Thank you, Teresa, so much for calling and, and sharing your thoughts.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Madeline, do we have anybody else in the waiting?
No, we don't, chair, there is no one there.
Okay. I guess, uh, I, I think a lot of what the, the folks who just, uh, called to share, uh, is, are some things that we had talked about previously. But, um, it seems that maybe the applicant would, perhaps we should give the applicant an opportunity to, um, address any of the concerns that the neighbors have raised.
Hi, Evelyn, do you want to address the, uh, concerns?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Uh, no, uh, the concerns that they have, uh, the ne- the neighbor, uh, my neighbor on, if you're looking at the house, it's on the right, it's on the right side of the home. And the addition that we're, we're proposing is pretty much the same size as that home. And then there are also other homes in the neighborhood that have had additions. And I just don't know, um, I just don't know how else to address it. I mean, the, the privacy, um, I have to look at, um, Ms. Toy's house. I mean, I, well, I don't have the plans in front of me, and I, I just don't know how to address the privacy issue.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, the addition that we're, that we have, that we're asking for is pretty much the same size as our neighbor next to, I mean, the addition, the second floor, the height of it is pretty much the same height as that, as, as our neighbors.
Yes. Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
I do have a question for Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Where she, um, um, I jumped in a little bit too soon, actually, I should let you wait to finish that, that comment.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to know if you live on the premise?
No, I don't. I don't.
Does another family member live on the premise?
The, the addition that I'm, that I'm, that I, the addition is mainly for my mom. Because my mom is eighty-five years old, and, and she needs, and, uh, she needs an ADA, a home. She uses a wheelchair and a walker.
So, so I guess my question would be to staff, uh, because if it's licensed for six, you have a person moving in, then you're living there, and there is no limit how many step, family members you can have. But if you're running, I, I'm just proposing a question, I don't know, I'm not making a judgment on this, just clarification. If you don't have a family member living there, then that older person is adding to those numbers of a residential care.
No, it isn't.
Yeah.
Because she is a private residence in, in that facility.
So that facility has no access then to the rest of the home, to the rest of the residential care?
No, it is connected to the home, but then my mom is allowed to live in, 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 in the facility, in the home as a resident. Like, I could live there if I would want to.
Right, you could, yes, you could.
I could, yes.
Yeah, and I understand. I'm just trying to do that fine line between adding another, um, elder person to a six-licensed residential home, and adding another elder adds it to a seven, without having a family member actually that lives in that home, or someone who actually lives there as their home.
No, my sister's gonna live with my mom, because my sister's the primary caretaker of my mom. She's right now staying in, in, in San Mateo, which is also, um, it's probably, um, thirteen by, by fifteen room with a tiny bathroom that, you know, the, the door is only twenty-nine inches wide.
I understand that.
And so, yeah, and this is, that's the reason why, that's the reason why we, 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 you know, we decided to do the addition over in that home, because it's the, it's the only place that has, um, that has land. And then before we, before we did the, we decided to do the addition, we have asked from licensing if we are allowed to do so, and then they said, yes, we could.
I'm just looking at the rationale and wanting to be sure that I understand all the components to, as the decision comes about. I just want to look at all the angles to be sure that I haven't left a stone unturned, from my perspective.
I understand.
So, so, you, from your, from, from what I understand, that after the addition is done, your mother and your sister will be living there?
Yes.
So your sister would be there a hundred percent of the time, that would be her residence?
Yes, and my, and, because she's the primary caregiver of my mom. In her hospital, she goes to the south, to the, to the Kaiser in South City. So it's, you know, all her needs are in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for, um, for, um, having more response. I think we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, Madeline, we don't have anybody else, uh, who would like to comment?
No.
Okay. Um, we'll go ahead and, and close the public hearing, and, um, would a commissioner like to motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
Okay.
I will second then.
Okay, thank you. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay, thank you, the motion is passed. Um, we will go ahead and bring the discussion back to the commission.
Through, through the chair?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, yes.
I, I just wanted to speak, uh, really briefly to, um, Commissioner Johnson's comment about the, about the facility and having her mom being considered a patient. So that is something that came up during my conversations with, uh, the licensing board. Um, and, and, um, the applicant is correct, uh, they did not have any issues with that. Um, if they were to be considered a, a patient or a client, they would actually have to be paying, uh, a paid client to be considered part of that thing.
There's, I just want to comment on that, Michael. You know, you can give someone, uh, you, you don't have to pay to be a client, I mean, people can give you a free place.
Yeah.
You know, you're still a tenant, a tenant in an apartment, you don't have to pay rent, you're still a tenant. So I don't know that I, I, I think that I'm coming from a point that I'd like to at least see how, something officially in writing that licensing validates that, that they say that that's permissible. I think that would be probably a good thing to have on the record.
Okay. Um, would that be something that you would want before you make a decision, um, or is it a condition of approval?
Condition of approval, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely, I mean, I would not stop, you delay something, if should, should it go through, I wouldn't want it delayed for that reason. But it definitely is a condition of approval before it's finalized, that that letter, that it have an official letter on file. And, you know, and I do know that the fire department, um, goes through on, not always annual basis, but at least initially, and then, um, they try to do annual, but it's typically not. And to look at all the component things that are in compliance. If she has five residential homes, she knows what she's doing. Yeah, she's, she's an experienced, solid person, so. But I would like that, thank you for asking.
Thank you, yes, uh, Biassadi.
Um, just, I'm gonna reiterate these questions, just because the people who spoke brought these issues up. So, um, they were commenting on the usage, and it's seeming like more than what's currently going on in the neighborhood. And the reason I addressed ADUs in the beginning was just that reason, because this is what's, this size of building is what is allowed now because of ADUs. I mean, this is what potentially could be done throughout the neighborhood, and that's because of the state of California rather than something we're doing. The privacy issues, I want people to know that we thought about the privacy issues, and we had them remove, if I remember correctly, the window on a second-story bedroom that was facing a neighbor. So the windows on the addition, on the sides at least, will be, um, non-existent. The one window that does exist is over a stairway, so it's not like someone's gonna stand and stare out the window. So, I mean, we, we have thought of, I just wanted to make sure that we said that we have thought about and recognized those issues so that, you know, people feel that they've been heard. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as I recall, uh, through the chair, that, that window, it is above the line of sight, because the, the stairway comes down, you know, you sort of come, and so you're like, the, the window is up at above head level in there. So there would be really no, no chance of people observing out of that. The other thing I wanted to address was, I know there was some concern about, oh, an, an eight-bedroom house is massive, but, um, you know, a bedroom is not a unit of area. It's not like a square foot, it's not, they're not all the same size, and, and as was observed, several of what are counted as bedrooms in here are very small staff rooms, and so, I mean, the, you know, the overall floor area ratio is just above the limit, where it triggers our discretionary review. But we grant conditional use permits for buildings with similar floor area ratios. I mean, I, I, you know, I've been on the commission just over a year, and I, and, you know, I think we've done, you know, at least half a dozen of these, they're fairly routine, this is not an absurd floor area, uh, compared to other buildings around it. It's, it's really pretty comparable. And, and as Commissioner Biassadi noted, you know, if they did this as an ADU, it wouldn't even be really so much a discretionary thing. They'd just be building an ADU, and it would fall under the state laws. So, um, you know, it's a big house, but, uh, even if it were sold into another market, there are people that need big houses. My, my mother was the oldest of eight children, I'm the fourth of five children myself. And, you know, there are families that need big houses. And, you know, this, this house has a, a large driveway that can fit up to six cars, by my estimate, uh, just looking at it on, on Google Street View. It has a two-car garage. You know, it's not gonna impact street parking, even if you did have a family move in where every member had a car. So I, I do think, um, you know, I understand people's concerns hearing eight-bedroom, but I, I think that the building as a whole, you know, it's going to be saleable to somebody in the future. If it did need to be sold, the business is regulated, you know, you can't just start renting out every room. I think we have regulations on how many rooms you're allowed. You know, if you, if you bought it and moved into it as a resident and wanted to rent out rooms, I think it is at two, you can only rent out two rooms.
I, I believe that's correct, yeah, uh, boarding, to be considered a boarding house or a rooming house.
Yeah, so, I mean, they just, it cannot legally be used in the style of just like an apartment building in an R-one neighborhood, that's illegal. So, like, that's not a thing that would happen. I mean, if it did, you would report them and they'd get shut down. So, uh, yeah, I, I do understand why people are concerned, but we have protections in place to deal with that, with, with licensing and zoning already. And, and I, I feel quite comfortable approving this. I'm happy to make the motion if other folks are done.
Yeah, one other comment, if, if you can, um, uh, when, uh, there was discussion about the windows and being over the, near the stairs, there are windows that can be brought down, and still someone not looking over, but brought down where you're actually, you know, those long windows. I'm concerned that we, that there's a room that without a window, uh, except near the stairs. Now, I need to look at it more carefully, but it just, I've been hearing, uh, one of the commissioners speak to that. Can you just be sure that I, can you clarify that window piece that I?
Sure.
So that I understand that?
Yeah, I'm gonna share the plans again, just so we, um, are speaking from the same.
My plans are on my second screen, so it looks like my head is turned the other way, and it looks a little awkward, so I don't want to keep looking to my right.
Oops. I think it was that we moved the window from the side to the back in one bedroom, and then on the other side, they're just, it was already on the back, and the window that's on the side is over the stairwell.
Can you guys see that?
Yes.
That's better.
Okay.
Because I'm finding myself, oh, you're gonna see my nose in a moment. But close to it.
So, it's, okay, I see where the window was removed from the bedroom at the top of the page.
Yeah.
So that was to help provide privacy to the uphill neighbor? And then, privacy considering the downhill neighbor, uh, is because those windows are, uh, over a stairwell and, uh, are above eye, kind of eye height. Uh, there shouldn't be anybody peering into the, uh, the lower property adjacent.
Uh, let me, let me navigate to the.
But there are two, are there two windows in there? It looked like there were three, two littles and a big.
So, so looking at the screen now, this is the elevation right here.
Okay.
And then there's a stair coming down, so you can, and the, the stair has been kind of put in there, so you can kind of see where the stair is relative to the window.
Okay. Yeah, it's more of a passageway window than a, um, a stay-in-peak window. Uh, I think conceivably, somebody could stand in that lower right-hand corner of the window and turn their head to look out. But it's not the same as.
Stretch, it's a stretch.
Yeah, yeah. And I think making that window any smaller wouldn't be very appealing on that elevation.
No, I mean, you can have rectangle windows, but it's, I mean, it, I think it's a stretch, just that someone would be standing there to look. Thank you for showing that.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Any other commissioners have any, any points of conversation? Oh, and then just to, just to clarify, to address the concern of, um, the neighbor who had, uh, said that, um, the view was, the view was a concern to them. Uh, I know that we, in San Bruno, do not have a view ordinance, meaning that, uh, just because a proposed project, uh, would alter your view, it does not, as long as it, um, meets specific requirements, it's still, um, something that we, that we consider. We can't, we can't turn down a project because it impedes somebody's view.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve use permit twenty-dash-zero-zero-two based on findings one to six, uh, and conditions of approval one to thirty-one with the addition of a thirty-second condition, uh, as Commissioner Johnson suggested, just that we get a written statement about the, uh, the status of the permitting.
And I'll second.
Okay, then I guess we do roll call vote now. Chair, what then? Um, I'm gonna abstain. I, I don't feel confident in, um, in, uh, in deciding right now. I, I feel conflicted about the size and, uh, the potential future use and the, um, the massing is less concerning to me, but the future use and, um, yeah, I feel a little conflicted about, so I'm gonna abstain.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstain.
Okay.
So, that motion passes?
The motion passes? Let's see here, where are we? Oh, there's a ten-day appeal period and thank you for coming tonight and the very best of luck on your project. And then we can go ahead and move on to item B, four B, which is 3041 Fleetwood Drive. And I think we're ready for a staff report again.
All right, thank you. Um, so this is a.
Michael and Chair, let's bring, good. I wanna make sure that we, you have a full commission. We have to let Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, yes. Is he in? All right, great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here. Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on to thirty-fourty-one Fleetwood and staff.
All right, thank you. This is a request for a use permit to construct a twelve-hundred-and-seventy-three-square-foot residential addition that would enlarge the existing home by more than fifty percent of the existing floor area. If approved, the house would be twenty-seven-hundred-and-ninety-five gross square feet, and that's including the attached two-car garage. The subject property is located on Fleetwood Drive in the Rollingwood Two neighborhood between Evergreen and Cottonwood Drives. The existing home was constructed in nineteen fifty-five and has three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a family room, living room, a dining room, and fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-seven square feet of habitable floor area. In nineteen seventy-six, the home's original two-car garage was converted to habitable floor area, which is the family room and utility room that you see in the plan. And then it was replaced with a carport. The subject lot measures eight thousand fifty square feet. That's fifty-seven and a half feet in width by a hundred-and-forty feet in depth. And is currently improved with an existing single-family home with a carport. There is a ten-foot public utility easement located right behind the addition. And there is also further back in the rear yard, there is a twenty-foot tree planting easement in the rear yard. The, the development would not encroach upon either easement. Um, and there is also a heritage pine tree located near the rear property line that would not be impacted by the project. The Architectural Review Committee reviewed this project at their October meeting of twenty-twenty. Uh, the discussion around the project centered around improving, the project being an improvement to the appearance of the existing carport and being mostly located, the addition that is, mostly located at the rear of the building. Um, after receiving the staff report, the Architectural Review Committee voted three-nothing to forward the use permit to the Planning Commission for approval. The proposed scope of the project includes removing the existing carport to construct a four-hundred-and-seventy-six-square-foot attached garage, adding a new front porch and a seven-hundred-and-eighty-two-square-foot addition at the rear of the building. The garage addition would measure twenty-one, uh, feet eleven inches in depth and twenty-one feet nine inches in width. The scope also includes a new roof with a more steeply sloped pitch. Uh, the rear addition would extend the depth of the building by fifteen feet. And if approved and constructed, the house would remain a single-story dwelling with four bedrooms and three and one-half bathrooms and twenty-three-hundred-and-nineteen square feet of living space with a four-hundred-and-seventy-six-square-foot two-car garage. The addition would be finished in stucco and have asphalt shingle roofing and new vinyl windows. Uh, the exterior color and finishes are proposed to be earth-toned, a mix of beiges and browns, with dark gray, dark gray-colored asphalt shingle roofing and a dark brown-colored front door and a dark brown, uh, vinyl windows and a brown fiberglass garage doors. The neighborhood is defined by, uh, similar post, uh, mid-century buildings that have a ranch-style L-shaped plan with, with the recess garage within the L. However, there are many of these homes that did not have the L-shaped plan with the recess garage. Some have been altered over the years. Some just weren't built with that exact same plan, but, but you do find that plan a lot. Because there is a mix of buildings with the L-shaped plan and without the L-shaped plan, the proposed alteration, which would alter the L-shaped plan of this house, would still be in keeping with the neighborhood character. Um, the proposed building, as I said, would be finished in stucco, which is a common material that's already found in the neighborhood. So, it is consistent with the residential design guidelines from that perspective. Um, and the project would overall comply with the lot coverage, floor area, height setbacks, and requirements of the code. So, therefore, staff found that the project does comply with the residential, the design guidelines because it is a similar material. It does have a sloped roof. And it does maintain more of a ranch-style design. So, therefore, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the project. Oh, and I also wanted to mention that even though the garage is being built, the driveway would still maintain a depth for at least two cars, side-by-side, that is. So, anyway, uh, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the project. We think that the removal of the carport would be a great improvement to the property's appearance. And also, as part of the conditions of approval, the project would be relandscaped, which would be a big improvement as, as well to the property. And so, for this reason, we are recommending that you approve it based upon findings one through six in the staff report and, um, conditions of approval one to thirty-one in, in the staff report. And I did forget to mention that we did send out notices to three-hundred-foot radius and staff did not receive any correspondence from the neighbors on this project. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Michael. Does, do any commissioners have questions for staff? Yes.
I just wanted to double-check. So, what you were saying is there's a total of four off-street parking spaces, two in the garage, two in the driveway, without obstructing the sidewalk?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions for staff? No? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and open public hearing. Um, I'd like to invite the applicant, uh, if, if they are available, to come and, uh, share about the project.
Aye, I've, um, opened up the line for Sumit Shankar.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Sumit. Thank you for joining us. If you could share a little bit about your project, that would be wonderful.
Um, absolutely. Like I did in the, uh, the November meeting we had together. During the COVID nineteen, we kind of realized that we're a little too close to each other. I need a little more space working, both was, uh, working from home. I'm working actually on my table right now during this meeting. And the kids in the rooms are, no more space left for a desk or a table or anything like that. So, and stocking up groceries like everybody else did, we had nowhere to put the groceries anymore. At least garage, you have a pantry in there, um, park your cars in there and then put, uh, you know, Costco supplies in there. Don't even have room for that. Actually, we have, you know, groceries and stuff still in the living room and a six-foot table. Trying to go through all of it right now. But, um, having the kids, um, you know, growing up in here in the San Bruno neighborhood, we like the schools over here, didn't wanna move out anywhere. Wanted to continue living in San Bruno, like I did when I was a kid. Went to, um, other public schools in San Bruno, all the cappuccino and left for the military and came back to San Bruno. So, actually, there's no, seventy-degree weather in January, where else are we gonna find that besides Florida, right? And play golf all year round here. And so, we wanna keep our kids here in San Bruno and go to college over here and they're gonna, uh, continue living with us for, you know, maybe next seven, eight years or whatever it is. So, they need their space of studying and learning. What might be the new way of learning is, um, go to New York State or something and go live in California and still go to online school and get a degree out of New York, never attend a school, right? So, this is gonna be a, um, an improvement in our quality of life for the family, uh, living in this house. And I need some improvements done in my, uh, house. I am due for a renovation. Great time to get your equity out and interest rates are low and take advantage of it and put it back into your house, reinvest. I think Ora and I were speaking about, uh, solars and batteries, but, uh, we're gonna have to do that after the house is built, going through all the consultants is to get the usage down. So, I am looking to, um, making this house green as possible. And my architect, uh, Steven Wu is online too. And, uh, he actually had all the great ideas for, uh, you know, natural lights coming in, the window size and, um, and all the other stuff to make the house, um, comfort level good. Reduce the gas utility bill. Right now, the furnace is going off the hook. So, the house needs to be insulated very well. So, that's all I have to say right now. I mean, I'm open for questions, so, you know, I don't wanna tie up you guys' time too much. It's already eight-twenty-one now.
Thank you, Mr. Shankar. Uh, do any commissioners have a question for the applicant? Okay. In that case, um, we can go ahead and check in to see if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on the item?
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay. We'll give them just a moment, and if they're on the phone, they can hit star nine. And if they're in Zoom, they can raise their hand.
No numbers, no hands, Chair.
Okay, I think it's fair to say that, um, there's nobody who'd like to speak on the, the subject. So, uh, I think that, um, we can probably go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Would anybody like to motion to close public comment?
Make a motion to, uh, close public, uh, comment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All abstained. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. And we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I'd just like to say, um, I think, I like the new addition, uh, the revised layout. I think it's a huge improvement on the appearance of the house and it's much more usable layout. I, I really like it. That's it, that's it.
Anybody else?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Madden. Just a question for the people who are at the ARC meeting. Was any discussion about the roof brought up? It seems like it's quite massive compared to the house, very tall. Just a slight concern, was there any discussion about the appearance of that and the, uh, the height of it relative to the main house?
I, even though I'm not listed in the, in the notes as having attended the ARC meeting, I'm pretty sure I was there. And as I recall, there was some discussion about the roof. And the reason for the, uh, the elevated roof compared to how it had been before, if I'm not mistaken, was to, I can't remember if it was a vaulted ceiling or if it was to capture, uh, more light with the skylights. I don't know if staff, uh, recalls from the notes on the meeting.
Um, yeah, it looks like there's a huge nine-hundred-square-foot open room with a vaulted ceiling. So, um, very, it's almost seventeen feet to the peak inside the house there. But that's an interior issue. It's just, uh, probably not in our purview. It's just the, I just wanted to know if any, anything came up about the, just the way it looks from the street.
My, my recollection, I might, we could pull in the architect to answer this. My recollection is that they're creating an attic space that will be usable for, um, you know, dealing with electrical wiring and whatnot, you know? That there, there's both gonna be the, uh, skylights with, with, um, sort of tubular skylights bringing natural light in and then, um, space to have wiring underneath the roof for solar. That's my recollection, but I imagine the architect could answer that for us.
Yeah. Um, shall we, is it too late to bring the architect in to ask a question?
Uh, yeah, so the architect is Steve Wu and the applicant is, uh, Sumit. Uh, can you let them in, Madeline?
Yes, Michael. Hello, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, this is Steve Wu. Can you hear me?
Hi, yes, Steve. Uh, we were wondering if you could speak, um, about the, the massing of the roof and the breaks in the roof and the, the purpose of the pitch?
Yes, uh, the pitch is really to bring it up to, uh, just high enough for an attic space, I guess, basically along the tops of the bedroom side of the house. Um, the, and as a result of the width of the house, just the basic geometries of that slope ends up being that taller, uh, taller roof line. Uh, we were obviously concerned about that in the very beginning. And as a result, we did push it back. So, if you look at the side elevation, the highest point of the roof is, uh, back toward the rear of the house. So, it's furthest away from the street as we could make it. And so, obviously, in a two-D drawing, um, it looks quite massive from the front. But then, you know, in, in three-D, which you, you don't actually see, but hopefully you can see it in the, in the side elevation, that the highest point of the roof is further back, um, from the street, more toward the last two-thirds of the house, toward the rear.
Okay, and I noticed it's an asphalt shingle roof. So, that, I guess, obviously, that's pretty common in the neighborhood, so, um, okay. One other question, it looked like you had two bathrooms right at the front of the house. Is that just like a separating room, like a toilet room separate from a shower room or?
Yes, yes, sorry about that. It's, uh, I didn't actually draw the, the fixtures in there because we, we haven't really figured out how we want that to be. But indeed, the smaller part of that bathroom is a kind of a wet room. It's a toilet slash shower room where.
Okay. Just wanted to, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any, uh, further commission discussion? No? If anybody would like to make a motion, we could go ahead and entertain that.
Yeah, I'd go ahead. Uh, I recommend the approval of, uh, use permit twenty dash zero zero three based on findings one to six and conditions one to thirty-one.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Mary Lou. Um, let's go ahead and do a roll-call vote, please, Madeline.
Chair Lethan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes. Motion passes.
Right, thank you. Uh, you're, uh, there's a ten-day appeal period and, um, very, thank you for coming in and thank you for, for being here. And, uh, I think this is gonna be a great improvement, uh, for your home and for the, for your little neighborhood up there. I think it's gonna be a really great project, so best of luck on that. Okay. So, that is the last of our public hearing items, and now we can move on to items from staff.
Good evening, Miss Chair, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. The first item on, um, item number five is the annual election of the Planning Commission Chair and the Vice Chair. Before we proceed with the procedure, I just wanted to thank Chair Lethan for doing such a great job, transition us from our face-to-face Planning Commission to COVID and carry on the Planning Commission and public hearing as normal, as if we're still in the community center and then with your gavel. I really wanna thank you. And also Vice Chair for carrying on. I mean, I apologize for not being able to have a monthly meeting, um, during twenty-twenty, but I think, you know, looking back, we did pretty good. So, thank you and thank you. Moving forward, um, twenty-twenty-one is going to be a very exciting year. We have a lot of projects lined up for you to consider, big projects that the city has yet to see. It is important to have a Planning Commission Chair and also Vice Chair to carry out these works. I wanted to kind of highlight a few, um, items ahead for the Chair to consider. On February twenty-sixth, twenty-third, sorry, my days are a little blurry, we will be taking the Planning Commission annual presentation to City Council for consideration. In February, uh, regular meeting, the Planning Commission will be, be taking public comments for the Bay Hill specific plan, Drive EIR and a specific plan and the whole night yard. I wish you probably had, uh, read the three thousand pages by now. We're also bringing forward to you the zoning code update, namely, we're only touching. touching about fifteen chapters of the entire zoning code, and we have another three to five exciting entitlement projects lined up, hotels, condos, townhouses, you name it, and towards the end of this year, we'll be launching our housing element update. There's a lot going on. So, without further solicitation, I will want to turn to Planning Commission to see if there is a nomination for Planning Commission Chair for next year.
Um, I know that in the past, uh, it's most common for uh for a Vice Chair to step into the Chair position, um, and I think considering the this the size and complexity of the projects that are coming before us, it may make sense to have um a seasoned, a seasoned uh commissioner serve in that capacity, um, but also maybe bring on a Vice Chair that's under their wing that would be new and would be a great learning opportunity. Um, I think if that were the were the case, well, how about this? I would, I would like to nominate Rick Biassodi to uh to be Chair, but would also want to encourage um others to put in their nominations and uh consider Vice Chair as well.
Are we doing one at a time?
Yes, we're doing one at a time, we're doing Chair first.
Okay, and so I second that nomination.
Madeline, can you take a vote for us?
Yes. Chair Lethan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six ayes?
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we'll now proceed to nominate the Vice Chair for next year. Now you all speak at once.
How about uh Commissioner Lethan doing Vice Chair?
[laughing].
Is that a virtual nomination?
Yes.
But she did Vice Chair prior to being Chair.
Yeah.
So are you, are you, was that a role you would like to uh have again?
Uh, I I would really like to see a um, somebody who's not had the opportunity to serve in that capacity serve, I would, I would prefer not to to serve that way, but thank you very much for the nomination.
And thank you for doing a great job as Chair.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it was, it was, it was a good learning experience.
Well, it was very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, in that case, I nominate uh Commissioner Harmon for the position of Vice Chair, if his agreeable.
Uh, I am amenable to that.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Okay.
Okay. Madeline, can you take the vote? Thank you.
Chair Lethan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six, six ayes, zero noes?
Congratulations, Vice Chair Harmon. Wow, I have a brand-new Chair and a brand-new Com- Vice Chair, thank you, and we'll be working closely, thank you. Moving on to the next item, um, I want to take a poll of a potential February second Planning Commission meeting. Um, as you will remember, we have amended our bylaws to have one meeting a month, so normally our Planning Commission regularly scheduled meetings falls on the third Tuesday of the month. However, um, there's, like, as I mentioned, there's a lot of projects coming through. Uh, we're, we're interested to find out if all of you are available for a February second uh special meeting, and this meeting will be dedicated to the zoning code update only. I am hearing, I'm seeing heads nodding, thumbs up, can I see anyone who cannot make it? No. Okay, Commissioner Madden, you cannot make it.
I I don't know for sure, I um, I have a tentatively scheduled trip to Oregon, I have to go look at a building.
Okay.
In the first week of February, so I will try to schedule it uh sometime after the second, so I can make the meeting, but I I won't know for sure.
Okay.
But if there's, if it's still okay to have enough commissioners to hold the hearing, by all means, don't, don't change it because of me.
Understood. Um, I think we will still have conf- the five confirmation, so I will go ahead and proceed as, as it is, and then hopefully you can make arrangement and join us.
Yeah, I'll do my best.
I got, thank you, I got the date on February second. I would like to um understand from the commission if there is an interest to move the meeting time up to five o'clock or five-thirty to six. I think we used to start at seven because um commute and other reason, so I want to kind of toss this out there to see if there's any discussion the commission would like to have. Yes, Commissioner Harmon?
Uh, I am strong, uh, yeah, thank you.
You're on mute.
Apparently Assistant Commissioner Kayon just received a transmission from the CAT satellite and yanked my headphones out. Um, I promise she's, she's not, I I do have a white lap cat, but I'm not a supervillain. Um, sorry, uh, I I'm strongly in favor of keeping the seven PM time, my day job, I I don't get off my, I'm on a support hotline and that doesn't end until six. So I I like, I literally can't come to a meeting before six without making special arrangements for my job.
That's fine. All right, um, any other feedback?
I'm available. I, I have flexibility within my schedule, uh, but recognizing that that Commissioner Harmon has challenges, I I I understand that.
I would also prefer to keep the time as is.
All right. Anyone, so it sounds like a seven o'clock is amenable to um all the commissioners, so we'll keep seven o'clock for um the the second and also the remainder um of the meeting. I do want to prophesize that we may want to move up the time just slightly for the Bay Hill specific plan, and we can talk about it at the next meeting, just in case we get a um, a large group of people who want to come in and speak three minutes a person times, so that kind of goes on a while. So we can talk about it at the next meeting, but we'll go ahead and plan for the February second, starting at seven, and that'll be the only item.
I'll just also note that for the Bay Hill meeting, you don't have to worry about my schedule because I'm recused due to um financial connection, being married to a Googler.
Yeah, good point, thank you. Um, all right, so this third item, as I mentioned, we will be going to City Council for uh the annual presentation from Planning Commission, and that's tentatively scheduled for February twenty-third. Michael Smith and myself will be working uh directly with Chair Biassodi to um go through the the presentation. Um, the former Chair Lethan has, has done this before, so it's, it's a pretty um easy exercise, and now we're doing this on Zoom, it's even simpler, so we'll have a format for you to review.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Kelly, would you like to do it again?
It's okay, I I'll let you have the pleasure.
No, no, it's okay, I I would be delighted if you went ahead and did it.
If you would like me, if you would like me to, I will for you.
I see that as a departing gift.
Thank you.
I will note that, so former Kelly, uh, former Chair Kelly Lethan will take, will take care of that, okay. Um, next one is really the kind of housekeeping logistics. Um, at the end of the last year, I've sent out a series of new public hearing calendars, updated uh confidential and as well as public information for the commissioners and also conflict interest maps. There's one correction, um, the November Architectural Review Meeting coincides with the BPAC Meeting, so when the time gets close, I'll make announcement of when Architectural Review Committee is, I mean, it's so far away right now, but uh, after I release that, everyone's probably inundated with emails, so we'll just wait until that time comes around. Any questions on the information I send out? No? All right. Moving along, um, the City Council was planning on selecting the twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission liaison, it hasn't happened yet, it may happen either next uh Tuesday or the week, uh, or the two, the next meeting after next Tuesday. Um, so when that happens, I will report back to Planning Commission. As of this moment, um, Vice Mayor, um, Marty Medina remains to be our Planning Commission liaison until a new rotation um has been designated.
Are, are?
That's kind of update.
Through the, through the Chair, are are we allowed to make suggestions to them?
I don't, oh, sorry, I was not speaking for the Chair, uh, but I don't think so, I think this is something that City Council has full discretion, um, and part of the reason is because we've lost Councilmember Laura Davis, so somebody needs to backfill her posi- her capacity and also bring um new Councilmember Tom Hamilton into the new capacity, and it's natural to do the kind of a shuffling of all the committees, and that's not just a city-wide, it's actually a county-wide um organization and also participation, so I think there's a lot the City Council is contemplating about. But it doesn't stop you from talking to Vice Chair Marty Medina if you have an ideal candidate. All right, last item is that I need three volunteers for the February Architectural Review Committee that falls on February eleventh. I see Commissioner Madden?
I can consider being a backup, I have a class that I teach on Thursday nights, so I would need to have a subs, a sub come in, so if I know in advance, I can make that happen.
Okay, so we'll put you as um backup, Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, I'll say I am available, I did serve on the most recent one, so I would sort of prefer to have that night off, uh, but uh if we need somebody, I would, it doesn't have any specific conflict in my schedule right now.
Okay.
Oh, I, yeah, actually, I won't be able to do it, my husband's having surgery that day. Later that day, something, a shoulder replacement.
Oh, okay, that's.
So I've got to be available to him.
That's it. Okay. Um, do I have any other volunteers? Okay. Chair Biassodi, and I just need one more for a backup.
I can be a backup.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I have Commissioner Madden, um, Chair Biassodi, and also possibly between Commissioner Harmon or Commissioner Lethan. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Flip a coin.
Chair, former Chair Lethan, I think you want to carry through this meeting?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to, okay, where are we, and I have my cheat sheet.
We're on item six.
Item six, um, second public comment, um, if there is anybody uh in the public who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to spend uh three minutes talking to us about that. Um, do we have anybody raising their hand or pressing star nine?
There is no one in the waiting room.
Okay. Um, in that case, we can go on to items from members and subcommittee reports. Um, is there a commissioner, a commissioner that has any pertinent news or information they'd like to share? Okay. Um, in that case, uh, the next Planning Commission meeting will be held on February sixteenth at seven PM. Check the city's website for details about that meeting's format uh as they become available. The time is eight forty-four PM, and we are now adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good night, good day, everyone.
It'll be the sixteenth unless it's the second.